... You're speaking here in the Southfield Board of Education. Now, I'm the board. My name is Darryl McKennan. I'm the board president.
I'm Fernette Bass, vice president of the board.
Yolanda Smith, secretary for the board.
Michael Moore, treasurer. He's having you go as the board trustee from the grand chair of the board.
Wanda Cook Robinson, superintendent.
Of the year.
Of the year.
Of the year.[24.08][24.08](APPLAUSE).
Abby Tom, associate superintendent for administrative services.
David Turner, social superintendent for human resources and labor relations.
And Dr. Wood is now with us this evening. She is part of an advanced accreditation team that is doing an evaluation of the number of students.
Okay. And keeping record for tonight's meeting is Mr. Paul Christen. In the back on the video, we have Mr. Chuck Capps, and on the audio, we have Mr. Ethan White. Thank you, Ethan. Okay. Mr. White, would you please lead us in the place to leave?
(APPLAUSE). To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome, welcome. This has been a very busy day for us, and a very proud day for us, as we were able to celebrate with the community our superintendent's award of being named the superintendent of the year for the state of Michigan. For those who don't know that, I will keep saying it until everybody knows it. But along those lines, we have with us, joining us tonight is Ms. Janet Jackson, our open county commissioner, and she would like to make a presentation as well. Janet.
I'll start over here.
Okay.[127.36][127.36](LAUGHING).
We're so proud of our superintendent. Let's just give her one more.[137.19][137.19](APPLAUSE). I feel very grateful and thankful for having this opportunity, just to acknowledge you with such a wonderful honor, being named the Michigan superintendent of the year of the whole state. That's awesome. It's not just that you blessed our kids, you blessed the whole community. And so, I wanted to take your time on behalf of the open county commissioner to congratulate you. I thought it would be most fitting here, at home, in front of those who know you and see you and see you do your hard work all the time. I know that you came into your position at a time that was not easy, and I know that you have led through change, challenge, transition, bargaining, all the above, and have come out on top. So, I just want to say I'm proud as a person where education is the most in my family, and I'm sure everyone out here is saying, education means a lot. It's all that we really have as a community, but we are blessed to have you as our leader. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mom.
I'm going to read the proclamation from the open county board of commissioners, and it states, "Whereas the wealth of a community can be best measured by the dedication of special educators like Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, superintendent of Southfield Public Schools, whose extraordinary leadership abilities have inspired and empowered others, and where Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson's standards for excellence and wisdom have created a learning environment that promotes positive values and encourages a commitment to education among students, staff, and parents. Under her leadership, the Southfield Public Schools district's student achievement and graduation rates have increased, and whereas her visionary approach to education has resulted in the establishment of Saturday schools, which have enhanced academic learning and provide extracurricular activities for our youth, she successfully restructured the district, maintained a balanced budget, reduced the district's operating costs by $90 million within six years, and opened a university high school academy. Whereas since Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson has been superintendent of Southfield Public Schools, the district has garnered many special recognition, such as the district-wide accreditation by Advanced E.D., making it the seventh district to achieve this distinction. The district has produced a brief eight millennium scholarship. It has named and was named state champions by Bridge Magazine for its high graduation rates. The 2012 graduating class achieved 11.6 million in college scholarships, which are only a few of the many awards the district has obtained under her leadership. Whereas Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson has created partnerships which has increased opportunities and resources for students, which exemplifies her energetic advocacy on behalf of our whole community. So, we join with the Southfield Public School District and the Southfield community to recognize Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson as the 2013 state superintendent of the year by the Michigan Association of School Administrators. It is with great pride that we honor her outstanding achievements and thank her for her tremendous contribution to the community throughout the years. Therefore, Michael Genjel, chairperson of the open county board of commissioners, together with commissioners Janet Jackson, Nancy Quarles, and Elaine Zech, do hereby proclaim commendation to Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson."[388.31][388.31](APPLAUSE). I also wanted to give you this. She's so beautiful in her red tonight. No, we're in red. I wanted to give you this from the smallest lives that you've touched, as a teacher and all those who have passed your doors in Southfield Public Schools, including mine this year, from the little, and this from the whole community. Some of the colleagues and peers in our whole city who have served.
Thank you.[430.12][430.12](APPLAUSE). Thank you so much.
Well, I could just keep on doing this. This is too much. I'm just doing it. Okay. Next on the agenda, the board would like to acknowledge the Southfield Public School employees who have retired in 2012 and have made years of commitment to our district. We thank the following employees for their service and dedication. G. Michael Terrell, teacher, eight years. Paris Gates, teacher, 22 years. John Rittenberg, parent professional, for 31 years. Alvin Quazlo, teacher, for 38 years. Connie Milton, runner, social worker, for 16 years. Kurt Shaw, teacher, for 27 years. And Ms. Carolyn Dominey, a project assistant in superintendent's office, who's been with us for the past five and a half years. I'd like to extend every one of them our deepest gratitude for your service. We're looking at approximately 150 years of service by the whereby the roots, and that's a pretty tremendous loss to all of us, losing that expertise and that dedication. But, you know, retirement is something that everybody earns, and even though we'll miss you, I know that your commitment to your family and those things take much longer. So, we miss you, we love you, but we're hoping for the best for the future for all of you. So, thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. All right. We now move to...
(INAUDIBLE).
Hold on. Did you want to say something? Go ahead.
No, no. I'm talking to the students. True.
So, now I'll turn it over to the reporter, our student representative. First, Mr. Earl Vines from Southfield Regional Academic Campus.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, I mean superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, central office staff and administrators, Southfield Public Schools staff, parents, students, and guests. My name is Earl Vines, and I am your student board representative from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. Along with the last month, Southfield Regional Academic Campus has had the following activities. On November 19th, Michigan First Credit Union had their grand reopening of the school. On November 25th, there was a trip held to Eastern Michigan University. On November 27th, actors from the play "Under the Influence" mentored our young male students. Also, Christian Holloway was selected as the student of the month of the Optimist Club. November 28th, juniors completed their EDP, created bachelor accounts, researched scholarships, and looked into our volunteer program. And also, our government board president, Darryl J. McKennan, superintendent, Wanda Cook, superintendent of the campus, along with others from the governor's office and other places such as that, had a tour around the school, which was led by students selected by staff. On November 29th, there was a Zumba fundraiser for Project Womanhood, which you would pay for the tickets and go in the Zumba project, like the exercising and all of that. Project 180, I mean Read 180 began in all the sophomore classes. Our project management held their meeting to nominate the 2012-2013 office, and S-RAC students completed their district survey. On November 30th, the second S-RAC leadership meeting was held. The theme was cohesive collective and unity. On December 5th, there was a field trip to Oakland University toward their campus. On December 6th, attorney, attorney, wait, well, I messed up part of this, but what I mentioned about throwing the schools turned out to be on December 6th. And along on that day, our teachers, Mrs. Nathan and Mrs. Thomas, took students to see the play "Under the Influence." As you can see, we're continuing to have an exciting year, continuing on to our mission of goal of great graduation.[743.82][743.82](APPLAUSE).
During Earl's presentation, he mentioned that we did do a tour of Southfield Regional Academic Campus, as well as University High and Southfield High. And I would just like to thank all of the students personally who stepped up to serve as tour guides, because you all represented Southfield Public Schools in the best, in the absolute best manner possible. So, for that, I'm very thankful to you as you exhibited what we try to teach our students every day, and you made us proud. Thank you. Next is Ms. Kiara Terrence from Southfield High School.
Hi. So, just a month of review for Southfield High. This week, Southfield Student Congress started their charity week, which we do annually. Yesterday, we had a Stop the Music Day, which we play the most annoying music over the P.A. system in efforts to get students to donate money, which goes to the Open Activities Association charity, Boys Hope, Girls Hope. So, we play the music during passing time, and we don't stop playing until we reach our goal. The goal was $250, and we did reach that goal. Today was Random Mess of Clones Day. Tomorrow, we will be visiting Heatherwood Nursing Home Facility, which is located in Southfield, to donate blankets that we made. On Thursday, six of our officers will be visiting McIntyre Elementary School to read to a second grade class. And on Friday, we will have our annual morning song, where we sing to students as they come in the building.[861.12][861.12](LAUGHING). And this year, we're going to do Christmas carols, so that should be fun. And we've also been having our cans who drive, which started December 1st and will end this Friday, so if anybody wants to donate cans, you are more than welcome. Last year, we started a tradition where we no longer donate the cans to a food bank, but we rather make food boxes, which we give out to families at Southfield High that are in need. So far, we've collected 2,200 cans, so we're hoping to get past that by this Friday. And scholars plus actually joined in with student congress. They're holding a movie day tomorrow for honor students from first and second card marking during six and seven dollars, where students have to pay $5, and all the proceeds will go towards buying gift cards to go along with those food boxes for the families. The senior class board is also hosting a $5 free dress day, and all proceeds will go towards our prom. The Southfield Daily Newspaper just came out with their second issue on Thursday, December 6th, and they are gearing up to come out with their third issue when we return from Christmas break. The sophomore class board, they are holding a student versus staff dive blog game.[942.62][942.62](LAUGHING). That's funny, love. And all proceeds go to the senior class, classes 2015. The principal council is preparing to, preparing to go on tours to the local middle schools to talk up Southfield High, and we're also preparing to do tours at our school for the eighth graders. Our varsity boys basketball team is undefeated. Their first game, they won 64 to 55, and when they played Oak Park this past Friday, they won by three points, 56 to 53. And the next game will be held this Thursday at our school at four o'clock versus Pontiac Northern High School. And the varsity girls' basketball team, they actually have a game this evening, which started at seven o'clock versus Royal Oak High School, and their next game will be December 19th against Seehawke High School at our school. The time is still undetermined. And lastly, Southfield High will be holding a test day on January the 9th, which actually stems from an idea that National Honor Society had, where we thought that a lot of us weren't prepared for the APT when we took it in March, so we decided that they needed to have a practice APT. So, our principal and our wonderful superintendent, they took that idea and ran with it, and now it is mandatory for all juniors fans on score.[1034.82][1034.82](LAUGHING). And we just hope that that will better prepare them, and so we hope that once we get the scores back, we're able to hold sessions with teachers to help students understand where they can improve, and hopefully they'll improve their test scores in March. And then I just wanted to say happy holidays to everyone, since the next time I see you guys, it will be 2013. Hope for the graduation.[1056.82][1056.82](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Kiara. Next, we have Mr. Blair Moore from Southfield Laker High School.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to recall what happened at Laker for the month of November. First, we have, on November 27th, the National Honor Society inducted 24 new members. Mayor Lawrence and board member, Mr. Fool, were present. Next, the student congress body collected over 1,600 cans for Gwiners, Forgotten Harvest, and the Lions Club. Stuko also made food baskets for additional three families from the school. In addition to that, 34 pipes of blood that can accommodate over 102 patients were collected by Stuko for the Red Cross during their last blood drive. On December 6th, every student government body in our district from all high schools participated in the Oakland Activities Association Conference. And the DECA team, students traveled to New York this past weekend, and tomorrow is Southfield Laker's first open house for the incoming ninth graders. The open house runs from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. The dance classes held their first dance concert on Friday in the auditorium. Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson and Dr. Linda Wood were present. Student Congress Christmas carol for senior citizens will take place at the Evergreen Health and Living Center today. The Lady Chargers are 3-0 with wins against Torrenson High School, Southfield High, and Troy High School. The board's varsity basketball team defeated Windsor Forster as a part of the Keener Classic Invitational Tournament this past weekend. They play Southfield Christians today at Laker.
They won.[1196.91][1196.91](LAUGHING). They won.
And for future references, we have, on December 17th, our band and orchestra winner concert beginning at 7:00 p.m. Following that, we have the PTSA meeting from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. And on December 20th, we have our fine arts festival at 7:00 p.m. in the SL auditorium. Happy holidays, and thank you very much.
Thank you.[1230.41][1230.41](APPLAUSE). And now we have Ms. Ashley Parker from University High School Academy.
Good evening, everyone. So, to begin, last Friday, December 7th, UHSA's dance team participated with Gwiners Food Bank, where we volunteered and we folded bags for families in need. Last Saturday, December 8th, 18 students volunteered for Michigan's First Credit Union Dance Day. This week, NHS is sponsoring Toys for Tots, where they're collecting unused and new toys for less fortunate children through December 14th. This Friday is UHSA's Third Annual Leadership Night, where all of our leaders and all of our students that are in pretty much every organization, we come together for one night from 6:00 to 10:00, where they participate in games and activities, and they have presentations. And this year, we expect more than 80 students to participate. Next Wednesday, December 19th, is our Random Spirit Day, and it's Tacky Sweater Day. Also, UHSA's first alumni reception is from 2:00 to 4:00. Next Friday, December 21st, is UHSA's Students Versus Staff Basketball Game. Last card marking, we had 261 students on honor roll. And last, but certainly not least, our school was singled out by the Office of Admissions for University of Michigan Ann Arbor to recruit more incoming freshmen for the College of Engineering. UHSA alumni, Claire Lucky, will serve as the liaison between U of M and UHSA. Thank you.
Thank you.[1337.25][1337.25](APPLAUSE). One of the things that Ashley said, we need to make a big note of, she said 261 students made the honor roll. There are less than 400 students that attend University High.[1353.82][1353.82](APPLAUSE). And we saw that 4 and a half students have made the honor roll, and that's something to be proud of. Thank you. Now, we turn the, you go over to the superintendent or the board of the superintendent.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank Commissioner Janet Jackson for the proclamation, and I also want to thank the Board of Education for sponsoring the reception for me this evening, and a special thanking to Ms. Paula Anderson, who was the chief architect of that event with the health numbers.[1384.82][1384.82](APPLAUSE). Yes, thank all of you very, very much, and also to everyone who attended. This evening, I'd like for you to take a look around the room. We have new art. You'll look in the back, and to the right, and to the left, and you'll notice each board meeting, we have new art displays from our students. And I want to say a special thank you to our students and to our staff for making sure that that happens. The art this evening is from Adler and Stevenson Elementary School. It was created by our K-5 students, and I think we have one of our art teachers, Ms. Cohen. I'm going to have her step up to the podium and just talk a little bit about the art.
Oh, wow.
Come on down. I don't think Ms. Lisa Cassini, who's our art teacher at Stevenson, I don't think she still was.
She was, I think.
Okay.
Oh, joy. Thank you. First, Adler would like to congratulate you.
Thank you.
You definitely deserve it, and we really appreciate you for that. The artwork, we've been doing as much cross-curricular art as possible. We've really been connecting K through 5 with all of their other core subject areas. So, we've been looking at their social science, their science, their math, and other areas that they've been studying to really create as much authentic learning as possible. The kindergartners and first graders experience A full on classroom spider web. In the art room, we made a big spider web, and we learned all about arachnids. You can see here, they learned about that. They also connected that with geometric shapes in nature. We also have a tessellation project that was in connection with the math group and the academic game from Miss Ragavan at Adler. And we looked at other artists that have specialized in tessellation art, as well as color combinations, color theories, geometric shapes, and patterning in nature as well. That was quite an extensive unit for the kids, and they did a great job. We've also looked at some line contour drawings, which they really studied the features of the face, and that connected to a project they're studying about them, learning all about themselves. And we have many others, but I won't take up your whole evening, although I could, because we do a lot in the art department. We really enjoy what we do. Students love it, and they really look forward to coming in and experiencing art. It's a great release for them through their day, and they appreciate having art in school.
And I'd just like to congratulate Lauren, Lauren, for the wonderful work that she's done at Adler. Kids have really worked really hard with the art, and we're just going to keep it moving and keep things going well. This turn, we have my portraits upstairs. I want to make sure I get those back.
Special thank you as well. They do a fine care upstairs of human resources as well. If you can't see it from here, but you're welcome to come up, and you're not getting a piece of it back.[1596.75][1596.75](LAUGHING). It's fine, we will pay for it. So, get something good for it.
And thank you. And thank you to our art teachers. With us this evening is one of our community partners, Ms. Renee Gates from the American Cancer Society, and she is going to do an informational presentation for us. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you so much, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And congratulations to Dr. Cook Robinson. As a state, my name is Renee Gates. I'm with the American Cancer Society, and this is our parent and chair of our Relatives for Life of Southfield, Wanda Turner Jefferson, and she's passing out a report to the board of our event this year. This year, we are so pleased, and we wanted to come and just say thank you to the Southfield School Board for allowing us to enter into your schools and to teach our children on how to do preventative studies and how to do preventative activities that can hopefully, down the road, keep them from getting cancer. We had three elementary schools participate, Levy, Thompson, and MacArthur. I'm sorry, Levy is a middle school. So, one middle school, two elementary schools, K through 8, as the parent is correcting me. And combined, the babies raised over $5,000 for cancer research. And while they were doing that, while they were doing that, they were also participating in a curriculum that taught them healthy eating habits, to refrain from smoking, and to be physically active, so that as they grow up, they will take those habits with them, hopefully, into their adult life, young adult life, and adult life, and remain cancer-free. We also had over 16 high school teams, and combined, the high school teams raised over $5,000, which made the total amount coming in from Southfield Public Schools, over $10,000 for cancer research from the community of Southfield, and that is worthy of the congratulation.[1733.82][1733.82](APPLAUSE). Our parents would also like to say a couple words. And the chair of the Relatives for Life of Southfield.
First, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Cook Robinson for being superintendent of the year for Michigan. Black girls rock.[1754.12][1754.12](LAUGHING). That's all I can say. My daughter is a Laker graduate, so I know the quality that, and the care that you put into looking after our kids, and my son is now a ninth grader at Laker.[1777.82][1777.82](LAUGHING). Keep me in prayer for him. So, I just want to say thank you for the diligent work that you all do. I am a cancer survivor, and I do believe in the work that the American Cancer Society does. I would like to thank the administrator- I would like to thank the administrators at the school for their participation, because without their support, it never would have happened. Ms. Teague and Ms. Fryzack, they went out of their way to help me put together teams. The sixteen teams, we had one alumni team, the class of two thousand and seven from Southfield High School. We had nine teams from Laker. We had the administrators at all four high schools. So they're there, and these kids want to do, they come out to the relay, and they participate. They stay all night, they walk. Dr. Williams' kids came after the prom, they were walking in their prom attire, which was like, okay, was really interesting. So they are there, and we really appreciate their support. My question, or my ask to you is, we would like to go into the other schools to make sure that the kids at the other elementary schools are receiving the educational materials that will help them live a healthier life and understand the, how to prevent cancers, and help us be advocates for not hearing the words, "You have cancer," or having a loved one die because of cancer. I lost my mother, my grandfather, to cancer. I have an aunt and two cousins that suffer from breast cancer. So I know what it is to have those words. So my ask to you is, if you would introduce us to the administrators at the school, and let them know that we will be contacting them to introduce them to the curriculum for Relay Reset and Relay Field Day. I know the kids had a lot of fun. When Xavier was at Levy, she took all my pennies and my silver. Mr. Moore made me sit down and write the email that went out to all of the teachers at Southfield High. So I know that it's a program that everyone will benefit. We gave you information about our upcoming open house, and it's Thursday, January twenty-fourth. It's open to anyone who's interested, so we'll have the information in the Southfield Sun. So please help us create an atmosphere where we have more birthdays. If you all don't know, the American Cancer Society is an official sponsor of more birthdays. So help us out. My name is Lwanda Turner-Jefferson, and I am a relayer.
I'm gonna ask Ms. Christian to give you some information and update you on the next all administrators meeting, and we will invite you to come and speak to all of the administrators.
Thank you.
Next, we have a team presentation from Levy Middle School and the Southwest Regional Academic Campus, and they're going to report to the board and the community on their attendance at the Fall Region Forum National Society of Black Engineers Conference in Chicago. The instructors are Ms. Kathy Bowler and Mr. Jason Solomon and Bella Smith. We'll invite all of them to the podium. Good evening. And I'm Kathy Bowler, and I'm from Levy, and we had the opportunity to take our students to Chicago, which we really enjoyed, to the National Society of Black Engineers. And the kids are gonna do a presentation on things that they learned when they were there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I'm Kathy Bowler, and I'm from Levy, and we had the opportunity to take our students to Chicago, which we really enjoyed, to the National Society of Black Engineers. And the kids are gonna do a presentation on things that they learned when they were there.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Clint. The mission of NASB is to increase the number of culturally responsible black engineers who excel academically, succeed professionally, and positively impact the community. And the middle school is doing this next year.
Hello, I'm Kyle Walker, and the theme for our conference was Honoring Our Passion and Driving Our Communities Forward.
One of the competitions we went to was Math Town, and the students had three rounds of competition. The first round was a spread. It was forty minutes long, and you had to answer thirty questions with no calculator, and you had to do it by yourself. The next round was the target round. It was thirty minutes long, with eight questions, and you could use a calculator, but you still had to do it by yourself. The last round was the team round. In the team round, you had twenty minutes to answer ten questions, and you could work as a team, and you could use a calculator.
Another competition was the Math, trying Math-a-Line, and it was for high school students. There were six teams that competed against each other. Questions were put on a smart board, and each team had two minutes to answer each question. For every question they got right, they got seven hundred points. The team with the most points won the competition.
Hello, my name is Hannah Cos, and one of the activities we did in the workshop was the elevator pitch. The elevator pitch is where a participant is given thirty seconds to provide a brief overview about a topic slash business. For example, we had to tell a business why they should hire us. I'm gonna do an elevator pitch. The reason your business should hire me is because I work well with other people, I'm dependable, I'm a hard worker, I'm a soft starter, I'm highly motivated, I'm highly educated, and I have a great personality. When everyone was done, we voted as a group, and the person that got the loudest applause won the elevator pitch.
Hi, I'm Shalina Cocker, I'm from Southfield Regional Academic Campus, and I'm also a senior. The fall conference for me basically was a set experience to meet new people and just to, it showed me the competitive nature of the college and job.
Hello, my name is Ashley Anderson, and I'm here at Southfield Regional Academic Campus. The most exciting thing to me was to see so many young people just like me going into the field of engineering and being able to share it with others and get them involved, and letting them know that I can connect my passion to engineering.
Hi, my name is Louis Smith, I'm a junior expert. At the conference, we learned a lot of different things, and different things we had to go through, and it was nice to see a lot of young adults going through the same thing and having to learn towards my experience.
Hello, my name is Miles Edwards. Dr. Carl Max wants to increase the number of black engineers graduating in the United States. NASB is the vehicle that will propel this initiative.
Thank you, Dr. Lwanda Cook Robinson, Cabinet, Southfield Board of Education, and
It's my understanding we're raising funds to go again.
Yeah. This year, it's gonna be in Detroit.
Oh.
So, yeah, two thousand thirteen is in Detroit.
I want to share with the community and the board that it is time for us to renew our district accreditation. In April twenty thirteen, we will have a site visit from a group of educators from outside of the state that will come and once again audit and review our district. At that time, our strategic plan must be in place as well. So, we will be updating our strategic plan. We were trying to schedule those focus meetings for December, but December's a busy month, and so we weren't able to get everyone that we needed to be there. So, we have rescheduled our strategic planning forum. It will be Thursday, January thirty-first, from six PM to nine PM. We will serve dinner at five fifteen. And on Saturday, February second, from eight AM to four PM. And we will serve a continental breakfast and lunch. If anyone in the community is interested in participating in that forum, please let Ms. Christian know. You can go on email notice, I didn't say my email, but you can call Ms. Christian, or go in her email, because we would welcome your input as we plan ahead for our school district. I'd also like to do a shout-out to Southfield Laker and to Stephanie Schinkie-Justins. The Southfield Laker Dance Squad was featured in the halftime show performing during the Detroit Rockall Lions game, and that was on Thanksgiving Day. So you had to look really close, but they were there. And also, I want to do a shout-out to the Adler Dance. On Friday evening, I had the opportunity to first go to Laker to see the dance, but I spent the first half of my evening watching the young ladies dance, and they were wonderful. And then I went over to Adler and had the experience of eating the food cooked by the dad. And at first, I was a little leery, just before the academic games, but I want to tell you, I loved their stuff. The dads cooked everything, from casseroles to desserts to entrees. It was wonderful. I had to take a plate home to my husband, he could've came and took them out to dinner. So it was wonderful. But we want to thank all the parents for continuing to participate and help raise money for our academic games. We were going to have a report and update on the summer school session that we had this summer, because you know, Dr. Wood is evaluating in the Lakewood District, and Mr. Chaff, who was gonna do the report, is in Atlanta. Oh, is he here?
No.
Oh, Ms. Collier's here, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were here. Come on down. I'm sorry, Ms. Collier and Ms. Jean were the principals for our summer school. I did not see you ladies back there, I'm sorry. Way in the back, way in the back. Good evening, my name is Ms. Collier, and this is Ms. Jean. And this past summer, we had the privilege and honor to serve as administrators for the summer school program. I will begin with an overview of the high school program, as well as the middle school intervention program. Session one, we offered two sessions for our high school students. Session one was offered from June eighteenth through July ninth. Session two was offered from July eleventh through August second. Students enrolled in the high school program, had the opportunity to enroll in classes for acceleration, credit recovery, as well as grade replacement. Ninety-five percent of the students enrolled in grade replacement met their requirements. Ninety-seven percent of the students that registered for credit recovery met their requirements. At the conclusion of the high school summer school program, each building principal received a copy of the student's academic progress, as well as their grades. As of November two thousand and twelve, all transcripts have been updated. One hundred percent of the students enrolled in the middle school intervention program earned a passing grade and received full credit in their respective courses. We wish the class of two thousand and sixteen well as they navigate their way through high The Enrich Academic Summer School Program was designed to provide students the opportunity to strengthen their skills in the core academic subjects throughout summer school. Building principals identified and recommended students based on their need, academic need in the areas of reading and math. Seven hundred and fifty K.A. students were enrolled in the program. Transportation was provided. Champions provided before and after school care for our students. Students were served breakfast and lunch at no additional cost. We celebrated their successes with rewarding field trips. Pre and post tests were administered at the beginning of the session, as well as we monitored students' progress along the way. Students received weekly progress reports, as well as a report card at the end of the summer school program. Evaluations and feedback were given to parents, students, and staff, and those responses
That didn't work when I was clicking it for her. Okay, as we tried to figure out the curriculum for the summer school program, we actually focused on two areas. We looked at where the students were coming from and the items from the meet that were served as deficits for our students. So we looked at where they were at the end of the school year, and we also focused on where they would be in the fall. So the first three weeks were spent reviewing items that they had learned in their previous grade level. And then the second three weeks of the summer school program, we focused on things that they would encounter as they, to help prepare them for the next grade level. So in order to see if our efforts proved fruitful, each student received a pre and post test. And as the slidesboards indicate, it was very beneficial. Each student or each grade level showed an increase across the board in all areas. ELA math score, ELA scores went up in each grade level. Third grade reading scores went up as well. Fourth, fifth grade, same thing. Middle school proved beneficial as well. Students in the middle school also had an opportunity to work in some areas of high school. So not only did we take them where they were in the grades in the past, we also took them a couple of grades up as well and introduced them to some new concepts. And as I started the school year this year, and I've visited different schools across the district and spoke with teachers who have the students from summer school, very positive feedbacks, I'm really excited about the opportunity that was given to them, and I hope we have the same thing for the summer of two thousand and thirteen. Math scores also showed an increase. Kindergarten math scores were, showed an increase. First grade, second, quite a bit. We also saw, all the way through to eighth grade, saw an increase in those. We also had an opportunity to work with technology, as well as science. Students used the Fox Kids for Science, incredible hands-on experiments. You'll see some of the pictures from them doing that. I would go into the classroom to ask the teacher a question or to say something to a student, and the lessons were so engaging, I would end up sitting down and putting my hands in the muddy, too. Very engaging, the students were very busy. And when we started, we looked at the, we looked at the time, and we thought, okay, these students are gonna be here from six weeks, from eight o'clock to two o'clock. That's almost a full day. No, it is a full day. But they were so engaged in the learning, and they were so busy that at the time, this flew by, it was really a wonderful experience. These are raccoons that came to visit. Very interesting. Again, some of the science experiments that the students were involved in. The middle school students were just as excited to see the raccoons at the elementary. They lost all cool points. Tornadoes in science. And we know we have a lot of flags, we just got really excited. This is the technology aspect of the summer school program. Each of the students were involved in a technology program that took them again through their academic subjects, math, reading, science. Middle school had an opportunity to do some assignments that involved math and using mathematics to help them ascertain how much money they could afford, how well they could live with the budget that they were given. It was very interesting. We had a lot of people who realized they needed to go back to school to earn more money. This is the parents, as Ms. Collier indicated earlier, we had some We had some feedback from the program, so this is based on a survey from the parents, where they demonstrated how they felt about the overall operation of the program. And as you can see, for the most part, we received an excellent score. I say we. Transportation, we did have, again, the children were bused to school and bused home. Some parents dropped off and picked up. We had a few transportation challenges, but all in all, it was a good experience as well. Communication between home and school, again, fares very well. The nine percent of inadequate score, we did go back and ask them what we could do to improve that. So that was, again, very, very good learning opportunity for us to find out what things we could do to improve the program. Professionalism of the office staff, again, favorable remarks. Fidelity of the classroom teacher, positive response. And potential 2013 schedule changes. The biggest, I guess the biggest response on that was the Fourth of July weekend. Because the summer school fell during that weekend, and we did have school the following Monday, a lot of parents and students were not very pleased with that. So that was the most, the only negative thing they had to say about that. And then some people thought that it should've been Monday through Thursday, as opposed to Monday through Friday.
In closing, overseeing the K-12 summer school program has by far been one of the most rewarding experiences for me in my professional career. I would like to thank Ms. Dean for being a consummate professional. You were a team player. Working with you has truly been an honor. I would also like to thank Marty Volder for his guidance he provided me in leading me with the high school program. I would like to thank Dr. Wood, she's not here, for her unwavering support that she provided Mrs. Dean and I. I also would like to thank Robin Brown and George Chaff. They did everything we asked them to do. And lastly, I would like to thank Dr. Cook Robinson and Mr. David Turner for paying us a visit, catching us in action, and supporting us in the summer school program. Thank you so much and have a great weekend.
Continuing with my report, we're going to the Chevy trip.
Good evening. My report tonight is mine and my consent.
That's my line. But I did want to say the dad's rock after you. Being a dad, Mr. Cannon, fool, that's rock. That's, that's, that's the, I'm plugged well, so. My items are contained in the consent agenda as well under Action Item A, B, and E.
Good evening, everyone. As you're aware, this is the BUSTY Head Start Policy Council meeting note from December So, to begin, our enrollment is fully, we are fully enrolled at 190 students. We have 143 students on our waiting list with 28 drops. We served in the month of November, 1,701 breakfast, 2,194 lunch, and 1,639 snacks. On, I neglected to mention that on November 19th, BUSTY participated in the internal review, and the following are the commendations and opportunities for improvement. So with regard to commendations, they were very impressed with our research-based curriculum. As you know, we use high scope to promote active learning. The data management and record keeping program, COPA, that you might recall, I reported about three months ago. And also our large number of community partnerships, they were very impressed with. With regards to opportunities for improvement, however, they would prefer our mission and vision statement be articulated by all stakeholders. An increase in parental involvement in school improvement plans, self-assessment report completed, the school improvement plan revised, technology and children understanding concepts of print. Our average daily attendance for the month of November was 73.21%. Attendance incentive program started December 1st. All children who attend school for the entire month will have their picture taken and placed on the perfect attendance board. They will also be able to get something from the grab bag. Attendance typically drops as the temperature changes. Children are also oftentimes out because of various illnesses. And Ms. Hill has informed myself and Ms. Katz that if there's habitual absences, then of course, Head Start will act. But typically, parents do call in and explain that their child is absent either because of health or other, other issues. So I decided to add a few photos to make the presentation move along. These are photos from the holistic health fair that happened at BUSTY on November 29th. Fifty-four parents attended Subway, and Jimmy John's donated sandwich trays. Wayne State University had a nutrition program. Mary Kay representatives, as you can see, we had a couple of special guests. Little mama, smart cat. Additionally, Zumba instructors came. We had a fitness night team personal trainer that provided parents with free trial memberships. Lironda Holloman, personal trainer, provided tips for exercising with a busy lifestyle. The Carmentis Cancer Institute was on site. Sam's Club donated fruit. Walgreens provided healthy living tips. Health baskets were raffled to parents. Whole Foods donated dried fruit. And a nutritionist from Coventry Care was also in the building. I neglected last month to share just a few photos from Head Start Awareness. I was really excited that there was a picture of Doc Bear, because just about every report I make, I mention Doc Bear. So there he is. And then, of course, our finest in blue, the Southside Police Department, was also at the Awareness Day. Oh, yes, and Spider-Man, he was an extremely big hit. So, our partnerships, and this is something that, as a liaison at Head Start, I'm very pleased with the director at BUSTY for just working so hard on partnerships. And so one of those partnerships is Sheriff Smiles, who donated 11 winter coats for siblings for the children of our bus, for the siblings of our BUSTY children. They are adopting 10 of our families for the holiday. Around, things going on around BUSTY are that Native Americans visited BUSTY and shared information about their tribe advancing, I believe it was the Ajibway tribe. The Bring Dads to School Day was a big success. Approximately 31 dads came and participated in their child's classroom activities. On December 4th, the joint governance meeting was held with Southside Public School Superintendent, Her Cabinet, the Board of Education, BUSTY Policy Council officers, and administrative team. At that time, service areas, area plans were shared, annual report given of the annual quality improvement plan and the compliance plan were all shared at that time. Upcoming events, December 16th, the Jewish Community Center is hosting a wonderful play, and you just sign up in the office, transportation is included, and you will be given a lunch. On December 17th, our very own Oakland County Executive, Elvis Patterson, will be a special guest visitor on December 17th at BUSTY. On the 18th, we have puppet show from the Southside Police Department. The first show is at 10:00 AM and the second show is at 2:00 PM. On December 18th, the special guest visitors are Diane and Jason Mondry, who will also share stories, and the students will make and take craft projects. And finally, the children will participate in many Winter Wonderland activities. I also mentioned on there that Forgotten Harvest, Forgotten Harvest was a big success on last Friday, and we had over 60 cars come, and it was, everything went smoothly, and the report did include that milk was spilled, but I was told no one cried. And as it relates to our budget report, our grant was $1,003,003. Our expenditures to date are $328,487, and the balance remaining is $975,132.82, which would include 25.2% of our budget has been sent. The budget requirement for, will be reviewed monthly to determine amendments to the Head Start administration. And then finally, the MESSPA's reform is currently in court for an extension of choice. It currently appears that districts will be notified at the end of January with their staff choices. And retirement rates will vary depending on the retarded choice of each employee that they elect. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Very good. Okay, we have no unfinished business, so we move right to the action items. But before we get into that, I want to ask for a motion to go in the closed session immediately following the board meeting for further discussion of Report 5123, which is a personnel action item. Would the board will consider approval of this action item after the closed session is finished?
I'm sure President not move if you go in the closed session after the meeting.
Support. Okay, thank you very much. This time, I'll ask for a motion to open and approve the consent agenda.
To move.
Support.
Okay, are there any questions? There are none, the technicalities, please talk to the board.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Mr. Williams.
Yes.
My President Katz, yes. President Buchanan.
Yes. Thank you. Take a motion to open and approve Report 5120, the recommendation for student discipline.
Move we open Report 5120.
Support. Okay. We had, we have regular board student hearings, and these hearings will convene on November 27th, and the recommendations for student discipline are coming before the full board for approval. Typically, we have four members serving at any given board student hearing, and that gives us a forum in order to act on a student item and it's normally passed. It's so difficult to ask this board to continuously give up their time and with many of the conflicts they have. So at this time, we're in enough board members to serve, so now the full board has to vote on the recommendation that was made at that student hearing.
Some of us were in Atlanta, except tonight.
Right, that's right.
We were doing forebusiness.
Sure. I'm not, I'm not accusing you, but I hope that didn't come across as a cute story, but I, okay. And that's the difficulty, in that, you know, we're all very active, and that's, that's a good thing. But the recommendation for that, well, actually, we're just going to vote to approve the recommendation of the panel that was sitting that night, okay? So, Secretary, please talk to the board.
You, Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Poole.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
My President Katz, yes. President Buchanan.
Yes.
Manley.
Okay. Next, we have Report 5121, the first reading of the amendment to the public's participation policy. Take a motion to open and approve that.
Support.
Okay. Ms. Katz, if you would please read the amendment to the policy.
This is the first reading of amended policy 00167.3, public participation at board meetings. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters only. The presiding officer of each board meeting at which public participation is permitted shall administer the rules of the board for its conduct. Presiding officer shall be guided by the following rules. A, public participation shall be permitted at a time as determined by the presiding officers. B, only those persons with concerns related to the operation of the school or to matters within the authority of the board may participate during the public portion of a meeting. Attendings must register their attention to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon their arrival at the meeting. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by the announcement of their name and address. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes duration. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. The presiding officer may prohibit public comments which are frivolous, repetitive, or harassing. Interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Request any individual to leave the meeting when that person behaves in a manner that is disruptive of the orderly conduct of the meeting. Request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person's conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting. Call for a recess or adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to urge such action. Waive these rules with the approval of the board when necessary for the protection of privacy or the administration of the board's business. The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited shall be limited to 30 minutes unless extended by a vote of the board. Tape or video recordings are permitted subject to the following conditions. No obstructions are created, this is A, no obstructions are created between the board and the audience. B, no interviews are conducted in the meeting room while the board is in session. C, no commentary, adjustment of equipment, or positioning of operators is made that would distract either the board or members of the audience while the board is in session. The person operating the recorder should contact the superintendent prior to the board meeting to review possible placement of the equipment.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. For a further clarification, is the vote required at the time?
This is a first reading. The vote is required at the second meeting to adopt this to the policy.
Okay. And the first reading of the policy. This time, I'll take a motion to open and approve Report 5122, the approval of the MESSPA ratified contract renewal.
To move.
I'm proud to announce that we have come to terms with our MESSPA bargaining unit, and their members ratified the contract and it's an agreement as of this past week, wasn't it? Okay. And we're ready now to vote on the acceptance of that contract. Do you have, does anybody on the board have any questions regarding to the contract?
Especially with the terms.
I would like to understand, I know we passed this on the table some time.
Yes.
And I know we have agreed to terms some time ago. Have there been any additions, deletions, amendments to what we had originally amended?
You know, the major factor that has modified is time.
Okay.
Took a little time to get where we are. And mindful of the fact that our duration is through 13, so in June, July, shortly thereafter, we returned to the table to negotiate a successor agreement to this one. Took a better part of a year or so to reach the agreement. But we are there, and now we have very similar terms to what we have presented to the board as you indicated back in study session, the term before that. Our position is pretty straightforward, just getting across the table, getting a bigger agreement.
Any likelihood of a more expeditious, you know, contact this?
When we present another contract to the board for approval. I'm always hopeful, you know, I'm always hopeful that we'll conclude the negotiation. I'm always hopeful, you know, I'm always hopeful that we'll conclude negotiations so we can return focus back to the classroom as it always should be. But there's, you know, a whole ton of things in legislation that we all know. But we're actually depending on legislation that's from the governor at this time.
Right.
In the event, I, oh, you did find this, right? I've been bored all day, so I'm not, I've been, well.
Just got it.
Interesting times we live.
Yeah.
We will see what that looks like, you know, when we come around. Sure that we'll have a lot of courageous conversations and open dialogue between the parties, and, you know, their landscape will change a bit in these changing times.
Okay, are there any further questions? There are none, the Secretary, would you please call for the vote?
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Myself, yes. My President Katz, yes. President Buchanan?
Yes, thank you. We've already discussed Item fifty-one twenty-three, which we've dealt with in closed session. You know, this is a little bit after the fact, but I still think it's important that we as a board state, you know, what our position is on the legislation that was passed today. So I'll take a motion to open Report fifty-one twenty-four, the resolution imposing rights towards legislation.
Support.
Trustee Williams, if you would please read the resolution.
Adoption, adoption of resolution imposing rights towards legislation. Whereas Southfield Public School District supports the best interest of Michigan and its citizens, and is dedicated to serving the community by promoting fair labor practices and working in harmony with labor unions, and has a long history of dedication and commitment to support critical issues in accordance to labor educators. And whereas so-called right-to-work laws allow workers to receive the benefits of a union contract without paying the cost necessary to secure those benefits, and so-called right-to-work laws do not guarantee employment for workers, and so-called right-to-work laws weaken the ability of all workers to participate in the collective bargaining process, and so-called right-to-work laws harm all workers alike by depressing union memberships and limiting the effectiveness of collective bargaining. And whereas federal law guarantees no worker can be forced to become a union member or to provide any monetary support to political or social cause they do not believe in. And whereas contrary to claims made by proponents of so-called right-to-work laws, academic research shows that such laws have no impact on economic growth, no influence on employment, and are correlated with a decrease in wages. In accordance to Bureau of Labor Statistics, the median household income in two thousand and five in right-to-work states was five thousand nine hundred dollars, less than in free bargaining states. And according to U.S. Census Bureau, in two thousand and five, the percentage of the population without health insurance was twenty percent higher than right-to-work states. And whereas so-called right-to-work laws, which weaken unions, also weaken the middle class. Twenty-two states have so-called right-to-work laws that prohibit workers and employers from negotiating union security clauses that ensure that all workers who receive economic benefits from union representation share the cause of such representation. Nine of ten states with the lowest percentage of workers in unions, Arkansas, Georgia, Mississippi, North Carolina, Oklahoma, South Carolina, Tennessee, Texas, and Virginia, are right-to-work states, and each has a weak middle class. The share of income going to the middle class, which is defined as the middle, sixty percent of the population is below the national average in each of these states. And whereas unions generate greater political participation of citizens, ultimately an effective voice for workers and the middle class and a stronger democracy, weakened unions are less able to advocate policies important to working families and campaign for those politicians who support them. And whereas so-called right-to-work laws are at the top of the agenda of the American Legislative Exchange Council, a corporate-funded organization where corporate donors have equal say with elected state legislator in deciding policies and priorities. Therefore, be it resolved Southfield Public Education opposes any legislation in either Congress, the State of Michigan legislator, or any statewide ballot proposal that would make Michigan a right-to-work state, and continues to count the efforts advanced by those individuals and organizations determined to weaken and destroy labor unions by educating the public and elected officials about the real purpose and effect of these laws. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Southfield Public Schools does not support the right-to-work legislation, and urges the legislator and the governor of the State of Michigan to halt support of this legislation because it most certainly will negatively impact all public schools and the community financially.
It's a little bit like closing the door, the barn door after the horse is already gone. Governor, tonight, sign that legislation, and once it goes through the normal review process, I think it's thirty days or so, and then officially becomes law. We have our work cut out for us as a state, as a country, and citizen to make sure that we do not allow this to stand. And we're urging all, all of us that are witnessing this, this meeting tonight, to stand with us as we oppose right-to-work, and we're going to do what we can to have this legislation reversed. I mean, there's something that we, even though we've had our issues in bargaining with our unions, it's, it still goes beyond pale to put this kind of retroactive, just really punitive law into place. It has no place in our society. And we're going to do everything that we can to make sure that we stand against this as a board. I'm sure that all of my colleagues agree that, you know, we all have, we all have our work cut out for us in twenty thirteen and beyond. Call for the vote.
Myself, yes. Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
My President Katz, yes. President Buchanan?
Yes.
Okay, next we come to information items. Report fifty-one twenty-five is a purchasing report. A report on purchases that are over five thousand dollars but under twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. We felt required board action, and if you're really bored, you can read it. And Report fifty-one twenty-six, our gifts to the board. Mr. Poole, you want to read the fifty-one twenty-six?
Fifty-one twenty-six, I don't see if I can talk enough. My internet. All right, got it. For information, gifts to the board. Sheriff Small Foundation has provided coats, food baskets, and other items to ten families at Bussie Center. This donation will be delivered on Monday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, during a special presentation. On November nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, Fifth Third Bank donated forty coats along with hats and gloves to Stevenson School. This was part of the bank's coats program to ensure that students in need would have coats to keep warm. This donation is valued at nine hundred dollars. Mr. and Mrs. William Bowens donated five thousand dollars to the University High School Academy. This contribution will be used to support student activities to increase academic achievement. Misses, or I should say, Miss Kathleen Hekel, Southfield-Lakers librarian, has donated books to the library at Southfield-Lakers High School. This donation is valued at one thousand, one hundred dollars, forty-one cents.
Thank you. We now come to the public participation portion of the meeting. Comments are generally limited to three minutes. The board will listen to all comments, but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or other administrators before coming to the board. Your cooperation is appreciated. And we have Mrs. Geraldine Amato. You state your name and address for the record.
Geraldine Amato, Southfield, Michigan. Your first reading of that document regarding public participation at board meetings makes me feel extremely unwelcome. That paid for much of what Mr. Buchanan just said about the right-to-work law, much of what he said could be applied to issuing such a document as this. It's an attempt at censorship. You get immediately three minutes anyway here, that's very limited public participation, and now you want to censor what it says. In other words, you should make the verbose document very simple and say, "You are not allowed to say anything we don't agree with," period. That would make it much simpler than this lengthy, verbose, authoritarian, insulting document. The math that is taught in school is not what is used in the arguments for fiscal restraint, the fiscal cliff. We are not being taught because the curriculums are controlled by the people who own the wealth of this nation. We cannot balance a budget with banks of credit script. We have three banks of cartels stationed in Washington, D.C. History is not taught in the public schools. If we study history and study the stains of such people as Richard Henry Lee, Patrick Henry, and the much maligned of late Thomas Jefferson, even Abraham Lincoln, and I'm sure it's not covered in that movie that's recently released, what they said about central banks and how they can tighten off the wealth and resources of a nation and control every institution within it until they can install a totalitarian regime. We are headed in that direction at very fast pace. The word expressed about public participation here is very indicative of the fact that people are graduating college with no concept what freedom really is. One author named Ernesto Cortez, I think stated it very aptly when he said, "We have a lot of people that don't understand the concept of power." But powerlessness also corrupts. The ability to act in one's own behalf is an evidence of power. We are afraid to act on our own behalf. We are restricted by rules, regulations, ordinances, statutes, what's his licenses. Our society is not what the original revolutionaries intended, but further adrift than we ever, than those people would ever have imagined would we get in such a short time. And our major problem is centralized power and the control of too few, and the wealth of this nation is now controlled by them. Nothing we possess today is owned by us because we bought it with banks of credit script. The mother of all predatory lenders is the Federal Reserve Bank's cartel.
Time.
If the good people don't rise up and assert their freedom, their liberty. Yes, I know. You could, you know, this is it. No one is welcome here.
No, everybody's welcome here. Everybody's welcome here that comes to talk about schools, except, except when someone's going to be rude.
You're the one that's rude and insulting, and I won't come back. You should be happy about that, you don't have to pass that stupid legislation.
You sure?
I don't need to come back here to be insulted by ignorant people that have college degrees. So you can call the cops on me and have me wait.
Move on.
You owe me an apology if I come back. If I don't get a written apology, I will never be back here.
Now come to the board members, where the board is able to share their activities, views, views. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Williams. Mr. Lewis?
I'd just like to say, I want to the room, those on the screen that have a safe and happy holidays and enjoy your family and friends. I look forward to two thousand and thirteen.
Mr. Lewis?
I just want to make a quick addition to our previous discussion pertaining to right-to-work legislation. It has been banned union, so what it does is make it illegal for employers to pay union dues contingent to work. Now, what that does politically is weaken the Democratic Party and the middle class is caught between a war between the Republicans and Democrats. Because we know that the strongest lobbying group in the United States, one of them is our labor unions. And if you weaken the financial support of the Democratic Party, then you destroy their strength. So it's a political war between the Democrats and Republicans and the middle class is threatened. So we do need to stand up and be strong because of the case where the powerful and elite have attacked the poor and disenfranchised.
Thank you. Mr. Poole?
Yeah, I'd like to just, I've been getting some disturbing reports on community response due to the governor's signature on this legislation. And I'd just like to ask the community to let calmer minds prevail. This is one of those explosive issues that will take some time, some patience. Let the legal and democratic process take its course so that we can show our children how adults behave. So I'd ask the community to allow this to run its course and let the democratic process take its course. We were so busy over the last couple of weeks that we missed the Southfield-Lakers National Honor Society induction ceremony, and we were all on there. And I know Superintendent was in one spot, one part of the board was someplace else. I think some of us were up in Lansing, so we were just all spread out. So I just took it upon myself to attend and represent the board. Mayor Lawrence was certainly there. But I wanted that not to go unnoticed because I could tell in their eyes like, "Where is everybody?" Well, this, we're living in very trying times, especially in education. So I wanted those students to know that their achievements didn't go unnoticed because at the end of the day, well, all we do is we're students who do an achievement. These students took a pledge to maintain high scholastic standards, to hold as fundamental and work and unturnist character, to be extraordinary leaders, and to give of themselves freely to public service. So with that, I wanted to recognize certainly Joseph Stryzak, Mrs. Toni Hickman, the National Honor Society Advisor, Miss Amy Gibson, and the forty-one students at Southfield-Lakers High School that were inducted or current members of the National Honor Society. You know who they, who you are. The board certainly want to send their congratulations to them and let them know that their achievements did not go unnoticed.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Ms. Smith?
Yeah. Excuse me, I'd just like to remind parents to make sure you fill out your BASSA on January first. Southfield High School's PTSD did make an announcement about that, and I want to make sure I shared it with the community at large. And then a very, very quick and brief comment about the RTW initiative today. As a young adult in this community and in this state, it's a little disheartening when you elect people and, you know, they get to Lansing and then they just go rogue and they do whatever they want to do. And I can see how it would be discouraging for people to vote, discouraging for people to get involved in the process and run for office. And I want to mention something quite deep moments ago, that powerlessness does corrupt. And for those of us who feel powerless today, as a result of a lot of stuff that's happened, and I think it's in tune with what you were just saying about calmer heads prevailing, but I can see how we might feel corruption might be the route to go. um, but I can see how we might feel corruption might be the route to go. But, uh, certainly, we, we don't, uh, we won't fight fire with fire in this case. But, um, I just encourage everyone to be very mindful of who they elect in that, you know, at some point, some, some smart person needs to get elected and come up with a system that would allow for some accountability and land up. You know, it's just, uh, it's just annoying and it's upsetting that people could do something that could, you know, cha- I mean, literally turn Michigan upside down, and they only have two weeks left to even be in office. It's very upsetting. And so there has to be some type of paradigm shift, a complete change of business. It's no longer business as usual. So that's my, my heartfelt just distaste for what's happened in the last four or five days.
That makes me, that's very.
Well, like, I, I agree with what I heard, but I feel that this legislation is an insult to our working people everywhere, to our hard-working staff. Uh, anybody who knows my history knows where I stand on unions and, uh, frankly, I don't think they deserve, I don't think you guys deserve this. I know you don't. And, uh, we had our problems, but that's what collective bargaining's all about. It's supposed to be about collaboration. Together, we have made this a wonderful district. We couldn't practically do it without you. It's not possible. So you are being insulted by the legislature and by the governor. And, uh, I would like to say that something really positive happened today, and I'll leave it to Mr. Buchanan to tell you what happened.
Thank you. Um, before we move on, um, we did wanna, um, thank Chartwells for participating in the reception for the superintendent. Chartwells donated food, which was very good, everybody was here, you know? They really had a nice spread. And then we'd also like to thank Champions for donating all of the floral arrangements that you see, as well as those in the lobby, those in the lobby as well. So, um, we really wanna thank you for that as well. All right. Um, I kind of alluded to this earlier. Last week, um, last Thursday, the sixth, uh, we had the opportunity to have, uh, Mr. Richard McClellan, um, come and tour Southfield Public Schools. For those of you who don't know, Richard McClellan, um, is the founder of the Mackinac Center for Public Policy, as well as the, um, voice of the Oxford Foundation in all of the legislation that's coming out there in regard to education finance. Um, he is a person that is extremely conservative in his views. Um, and I had the opportunity to meet him during my fellowship in the Michigan Political Leadership Program. While in this, uh, program, I actually had a chance to sit down and have a beer with him. And, uh, our conversation led to him actually stating to me that he wasn't familiar with any school districts, that basically he is a policy person. And, you know, my argument to him was that, "How do you write policy when you haven't seen a school district?" So my invitation was for him to come to Southfield and see what a school district that works looks like. He, he accepted that offer and last Thursday, he came down and toured Southfield Public Schools. Um, the tour started at Vanderburg Elementary. We were greeted by students who greeted us in their native language. I was very impressed to have, you know, elementary school students, you know, uh, greeting us as we came in, in each in their native language. I think we had, uh, one girl who spoke Farsi, Spanish, and two African dialects that were Wolaf and, uh...
Huh? Was it French?
Not, was it French? Another French. Another African dialect, but anyway. So we had four, you know, we had these four little kids standing there and, I mean, and they just, you know...
I thought you said byler. True, they do.
So, um, we had the chance to go to several classrooms, giving our guests a chance to observe the student makeup, as well as content delivery that was taking place in each classroom. Uh, we actually went to another class where the class was being taught in Spanish, and that was very exciting to stand there and see how engaged all of the students were in the Spanish class. We then went to Ezra, where the students demonstrated what it means to be on time and on task. Students there exhibited what it means to believe in children regardless of where they started. I often say that here in Southfield, we meet children where they are and we get them to where they need to be. And that belief was fully on display at Ezra. I was extremely proud of, uh, of that building in particular because, uh, that's the building where I think a lot of people have negative ideas about what takes place in Ezra, and I challenge that because this is where we're actually saving lives. We're turning these young people around over at Ezra, getting them back on task where they're graduating with their home school. So, um, I was really proud of their efforts there. Next, uh, we went to University High School where these students just absolutely showed. We were able to demonstrate how these students are excelling in a very accelerated and stimulating environment. Southfield High was our final stop, where our guest was exposed to the complete diversity of our student makeup, including our special needs students. Again, our student guides were impressive, articulate, and represented themselves professionally. Um, it, it, it really, um, fortunately, my shirt was big enough that I didn't bust all the buttons off on it, they were, they were exceptional. The plan was to expose our guests to the wide diversity of students we serve and meet all of their needs. If the governor's office is focused on any time, any place, and any space delivery for students, his representatives saw firsthand what that looks like in Southfield Public Schools. The tour concluded with lunch and the discussion of the educational and financial challenges that we face and overcome with the determination and commitment of our staff to our students. Mr. McClellan mentioned to me that he was impressed with the fact that not only were community members involved in the district, but that the mayor was, uh, there, which demonstrated that as a community, we're fully engaged. He was impressed, to say the least. I wanna personally thank Dr. Cook Robinson, Dr. Lynda Wood, Nicole Christian, and Jackie Robinson for planning and executing an extremely meaningful day in Southfield Public Schools. I would like to also commend our principals, Terry Johns, Martin Balger, Marcia Williams, and Mike Horn, for helping me to demonstrate what we already know, that Southfield Public Schools gets it done every day without complaint or fail. And last, I would like to thank and congratulate the students who served as our tour guides as they demonstrated what is most essential about our mission, our children and how they are becoming contributing members of society. Result of that was, today, we received a letter. The letter was addressed to Governor Schneider and it came from Mr. McClellan. Letter reads, "Governor Schneider, last week, at the request of Darryl Buchanan, President of Southfield Public Schools Board of Education, I went on a day-long tour of Southfield Public Schools and met with Superintendent Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson and our key staff to get a better understanding of the Southfield Public School System in light of the work I am doing on education finance. Here are some highlights of my observations. This is a public school system that is trying very hard to educate its pupils to be college and career ready. Uh, I admit that with all the time spent on DPS, Highland Park, and Moskegon Heights, I had an impression that most minority school districts were either fiscal or academic basket cases," is words. "The Southfield Public Schools is using many of the techniques necessary to serve a diverse population, including an examination, i.e. selective school for those students capable of high performance. Stem class using the flipped classroom technique, an international back-and-forth program for first through twelfth grade, focused academies in engineering, business, medical, and natural sciences, and arts and communication. Dual college enrollment, an ongoing relationship with the University of Michigan, an outstanding alternative high school, and corporate partnerships. But the most impressive aspect was the environment, the enthusiasm of the students and teachers, and the ability of the administrators and board members to articulate a shared vision for their community. Notwithstanding what is going well, I received a briefing on the real financial challenges the district is facing and some of the unique issues facing Southfield Public Schools, including declining enrollment, driving the concomitant decline in per pupil funding, decline in property values, driving down property tax revenue, declining state per pupil allowance, impact of special education costs at sixty thousand dollars per pupil, the fact that fifty percent of all charter schools in Oakland County are in Southfield. And one complex matter that they discussed was the perceived unfairness of some of the way education data... Oh, yeah. Education data is used to rank schools. For example, they said, uh, they said they do very well with pupils who go through the Southfield Public School System for their education, but they are faced with a number of what they call transients, unprepared students who enroll in the Southfield Public Schools when it's too late to achieve college or career readiness. It confirmed my sense that the data, performance measurement, and school ranking issues need more work before a performance-based funding model can be fully implemented." And aside, Richard D. McClellan, I'd say that this was worth everything that we put into showing him what, what it looks like in Southfield Public Schools. Hopefully, now, some of the, um, draconian measures that have been taken upon by this legislature will be reviewed before they get to education to not make the kind of cuts that they had proposed because now they've actually seen a school district that is facing all of the issues that every district in this state faces, but we're still getting the job done every day despite of those challenges. And, what was it, what was it that we repeated throughout the day, to do that and we don't?
We don't whine.
We don't whine.
We don't complain.
We don't whine.
No whining.
And throughout the day, there was no whining to him about any of the challenges. We just wanted to demonstrate what a committed staff, what a committed community that holds education at high value, what that looks like and how that makes the system work. So it was a very rewarding day, to say the least, and something that I will always look back upon and say that hopefully, Southfield Public Schools again made a difference. Um, before we go, I would like to wish everybody a very happy holidays, uh, of Christmas and Hanukkah, uh, as well as a Happy New Year. So, um, that's my comments for the, that's my last comment for two thousand and twelve. Our future meeting, December eighteenth, we have a, uh, special meeting at six o'clock. Uh, six fifteen, we're gonna have student hearings the same day. December twenty-third through January fifth is winter break, schools will be closed. And January eighth at seven o'clock will be our next regular board meeting. And at this time, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
For adjournment.
To move and support it. And no other managers are coming for this board. This meeting of the Southfield Board of Education is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming.